All right, it is now 7:35. We started our meeting at 7 o'clock, went right into executive session. We're now out of executive session and starting the public portion of our meeting. I do believe we're going to have a need for executive session at the end of tonight's meeting, and so we'll probably be voting when we come out, just for transparency's sake. We do have a couple -- or a presentation to put up before superintendent's comments, so without further ado.
All right. Try out the new system. It's good?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a nice new system now, so it won't crack out and do all those crackling noises that it does, and so it should be, hopefully, a lot better. So every year, the superintendent of schools is charged with making this presentation to the public and to the Board of Education that, basically, revealing the year when it comes to HIB. So in our district, these are things called the Electronic Violence and Vandalism Report. This has to be sent to the state, it has to be approved by the state, and then I have to present it to you at the end of the school year, and then the board has to vote on the approval of this, and that's part of it. So we had no substance abuse or weapons reported cases in the district. We had five confirmed HIB cases, that's harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We had 35 investigations, and five were confirmed. We had one act of vandalism, which happened to be a theft. We had violence, we had three incidents, which is fights and threats. One of those fights was, I think, second grader, so it's, you know, it's a K-8 district's a little different, so it's, they weren't, these weren't real, some of them were real involved, but some of them were elementary school things. The police were notified a few times there, there was in-school suspension and out-of-school suspensions. So here's our report on vandalism, and you can see the data from the last three years. You know, when the numbers are just low, I don't know if you can really say that there's a big change, trending down or up. We could say they're trending down, but they're, you know, they're so small to begin with.
Can everyone see, or Steve or you in the way?
Am I in the way?
I don't know.
I'm in your way? How's that? Good.
Can you go back one page, just so they can use the case? There you go.
This is already posted on the website, by the way. So in the HIB portal, you'll see this presentation. So actions taken, trainings, programs, we do HIB and several other trainings throughout the year that are mandated. We also do things that are not mandated because we feel like it's important. We did, we did two parent programs this year as well. The one that I attended at Valley View was not well-attended. I think if you subtracted my family from there, which was about seven people from, that I knew there that were my family members, I think there was two other people there. So it wasn't, it wasn't very well-attended, but we did do as much as we could to publicize it, it's just that, you know, there's other things out there, too. We have sports and plays and all the other things that are going on. School-wide HIB preventions, we have, we have so many different things we do with this. We spend, we spend a lot of time. We even purchased an online training program that teachers have to do because we also have to train volunteers and substitute teachers, bus drivers, things like that, so all these different ways we do, we do address it. If you, if you remember from last year, we had, we passed our HIB report card, but we did have a few areas that were under 80 percent. So I did ask the principals of the three schools to develop an action plan to address any areas that they answered that were under 80 percent. In the end, we finished over 80 percent, which is what you need, but any of the areas that were below 80 percent, I asked the principals to make a plan of action to make that, to fix that. So we were able to do, to, for this next report card that will be due September 15th, we will not have areas under 80 percent. One of the areas was just making sure everybody's trained, like, we didn't train volunteers, we didn't train subs. So now we make sure volunteers and subs are, are trained. You probably remember back when we did the fingerprinting of the volunteers, along with the fingerprinting, was an online HIB program that they had, that the volunteers had to take part in, so that's going to address some of these areas. Any questions about any of this HIB from the board or from the public? No? All right.
No trends, no issues that are consistent with anything outside the norm? Like this is a state?
We're still doing a lot of investigations. I think, I think we could probably do better at filtering some of that out. To have 35 investigations in a K-8, it seems like a lot. I think, I think what's happening is, we might be super sensitive to, you know, when I read the, what's coming through as a possible HIB, something maybe we can do, we might be able to filter out some of that, that wouldn't technically be an investigation. That's the only area I could see that we might want to focus on. We did have a, you know, a cyber incident, but we, we've addressed it, and we dealt with bringing training in for the public and for the students and for the staff. So, yeah, there's, there's always something going on with, with HIB. And maybe not everybody's familiar with this, but any, even if things happen outside of the school, even if it happens like on a Saturday night at someone's house, we sometimes have to be involved in that. We, we do have to get involved if, if there's a nexus to the school, and if the, if the person who is the victim of the HIB incident is, is, if their education is substantially disrupted. So if the person comes to school and they're not having any problems, we shouldn't be involved, it's the parents, you know, it happens that night at their house. If, if the child is so upset that the child can't come to school, or their homework, or their, or their schoolwork is, is fading because of these, of whatever the incident was, then we need to be involved. So some of these cases on here actually don't even happen in our school, but we need to be involved in it if, if there's a nexus to the school. And this was that whole thing that happened, I'm sure you guys must have remembered, with the Indian Hills case, and it was back and forth on whether or not there's a 24/7 policy. Do you remember going through any of this? And, and in the end, after all the different appellate levels, in the end, the final result was, school districts may not be involved in issues that happen outside of the school if there's no nexus to the school. Because there were some times where some districts were punishing kids for things they did, like Saturday night at their house, and, and I think rightfully so, everything worked out in the way that it should have, that the district should really be involved in things that the district has control over, meaning, I think, you know, from 8 to 4, that's, that's our time, and then, you know, basically, from 4 o'clock on, they're in their houses and doing things with their parents, and their parents have to be responsible. Questions? Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Now, I'm going to wait for you to walk over, and we're going to have our superintendent's Carlos Duarte is taking a much-needed vacation, I say "much-needed," I think, but he's on vacation nonetheless, and expressed his regret for not being able to be here. Otherwise, we're good to go. So, superintendent's comments.
On the agenda tonight is the approval of one additional merit goal from my contract, and that was the goal that said that we would increase student proficiency on writing tasks, supported, writing tasks by supporting claims with textual evidence. Eighty-five percent of the students in grades 6 through 8 demonstrate proficiency or increase at least one level on Denville Research Writing Task as measured by the Park and Common Core-aligned rubrics. And, very nicely, 87 percent of our students did achieve the goal in Valley View Middle School in writing, so that's why that's on there, for approval. I, I shared with the board what I thought was pretty interesting, our Denville Students' College Acceptances of Class of 2015. This is all, these are students that were accepted to schools that graduated from either Morris Hills Regional, either Morris Hills Regional School, not, I didn't look into Morris Catholic or any of the other schools, but I got the data from Morris Hills Regional. I'll just say a couple of highlights. We had Boston College, Carnegie Mellon, Drexel, Georgia Tech, Loyola, Stevens, Cooper Union, Fordham, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, University of Michigan, NYU, Rensselaer Polytechnic, Rochester Institute of Technology, Bucknell, Lafayette, Lehigh, Loyola, Princeton, University of Arizona, Brigham Young, UC Berkeley, Colgate University, University of Colorado, Cornell, George Washington, Georgetown, University of Pennsylvania, and Vanderbilt. These were some I just pulled out. So our students, I know that we set the foundation for them, but the high school takes all the credit for where they go, but maybe it's time for us to pull a little of that credit. So our students who graduated high school in the year 2015, these are some of the prestigious universities that I, that I gave you. I don't, I don't think I shared the, the highlights, I shared the whole list with you guys, so if you're looking for the highlights, it's not in there. But I did give you the whole list, I'm not going to sit here and read all of them. There's a lot of Rutgers, there's a lot of TCNJ, we have, you know, a lot going to CCM and all different schools, but I thought I would highlight just a few schools that I thought came, jumped out at me as interesting. The Board of Education Committees, we talked a little bit about this. Do you want to talk about this as a discussion item, or do you want to kind of discuss the scheduling of it? Seems like we have a difficult time coming up with it. The Ops Committee is set, does the, the curriculum committee want to talk about when they would like to schedule, or you want to do this in another manner?
We can do it towards the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Since Carlos isn't here, I'd prefer to have him involved in that.
Perfect. We can wait. I did, I did give you a goals recap sheet. I, I did get a message that, that, that it came up that you wanted to discuss goal-setting. I don't know if you wanted to do that tonight, which is okay with me, either way, but I wanted to give you some information. So on Friday, I gave you a goals recap, and then I gave you what I listed as a draft, possible goals for 2015-16. Does anybody want to discuss goals review?
I thought it was the last meeting, we talked about bringing in New Jersey school boards to do this.
Yeah, I've got some emails going back and forth with Charlene, and it'll probably be late August, or maybe the first meeting is September. She's got booked some of the dates, I proposed that they were not good for her.
Okay, so...
And also, that ties into the, the self-evaluation, sometimes the goals emanate from, from that process.
So...
All right, well, so we should nail down a date, because it shouldn't really slide much later than early September, that's not fair to the district that has to work on the goals.
Yeah, no, I agree. But we could also look at, to find a day she's free in August and have a special meeting.
Okay.
I'd say, all right, I guess about that meeting to, to...
I'd prefer, it's going to be a...
Goal-setting and the board evaluation.
It's going to be a long meeting anyhow, and when you cram everything, you know, although in August, we already have two meetings, so I'm fine with it being a special meeting. I think for the sake of our administrators, it'd be better to not let it slide into September. September is a horribly busy one.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Don, if you're in contact with her, I agree, if we could put it at the end of August or sometime in August, that would be ideal, at the latest, hopefully.
I think, I think a first start would be just review the recap, take a look at some of the suggestions, maybe come up with some just, some suggestions of your own, see what you think. Some of them are kind of broad, and they can, you know, be tailored, and, just like we did last year. Okay? I did share with you the history of our trailers. Everybody take a look at that document I gave you? So, because we kept talking about, how old are they, we don't know, this and that, so we have the Riverview Trailers, looks like it's the oldest one from 2005, oh, also Lakeview, and then Valley View started in 2006. So they're getting to, they're getting to the point where, you know, the, the lifespan is starting to go past what the intended lifespan is. And also, our original approval was for two years, so we do have to ask for approval every year, and the county DA chose to come out and do a tour of the district, and it's coming up sometime in early August, right? I know I haven't on my calendar.
Oh, it's, July, what, coming in next week?
Oh, they're coming in next Monday, though. It's next Monday. So the county superintendent of schools is going to do a tour, take a look at our trailers to determine whether or not they'll grant the additional approval to keep them. They also will look at any multi-use spaces. That doesn't mean multi-use, like two teachers use a room at different times, it's, it's having two teachers in the same room at the same time. We're going to look at that. So I wanted to share that with you. I also gave you a list of, like, a draft terms of the, of a possibility of moving to the town hall for the, for the, for the use of the office. I wanted everybody to take a look at that. If anybody wants to discuss that, I'd be happy to. We can put that on the next Ops Committee, so we can discuss it in there, and then have a debate on what, what we're going to do in the district moving forward. And that's it for me.
Good. Thank you. You know, are you sure you're not wearing a microphone?
No, this one's good. I have two, probably, maybe, maybe, you know what, I'm going to push this one off, we'll just use that one.
That's worse. Can you guys hear me back there, okay? Can you? All right, good. Sandy is on vacation, I'm sure, well-deserved, and so she won't be doing her superintendent's comments, but we do have some VA comments, hopefully, right?
Just a little comment, I just...
You've got to turn her on.
I just want to thank the board for having me this year, and I'm really excited and looking forward for a really successful school year. In the distance, in business office, we are starting to do the audit, the fiscal year audit. We are working with the auditors, and so far, it's going well. And again, this is only my second week, so I, my comments are very limited.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know we've got a lot of facilities types of things happening. Is everything on schedule? Are there any issues?
All the facilities and the projects are, are in schedule, as, as of right now, they still, it's, it's ongoing project, of course, hopefully before September. We'll have a very good idea of how much we need to do throughout the year, but as, I predict that by the end of August, it will be complete.
Good. Thank you. All right, so it is now 7:52. We're going to open for public comment, a couple sort of small housekeeping rules. You do have to come up to the podium, you do have to say your name and address for the record, there is a three-minute time limit that we try to keep to, but please feel free, anything that is pertaining to the agenda, we'd love to have you or listen to. There's a microphone, too.
... is, I've got a comment about the longer school day for the, for grade school kids, is that appropriate enough for that?
I don't think that's on the agenda right now.
It's on the agenda, but, you know, it's...
We can...
Is that appropriate time to talk about that?
At the end of the meeting, we have another portion for the public?
Will we?
Just name, address, and again, just adhering to the time limit, if we can.
My name is Debbie Long, my address is Green Alphandai in Denville, Louisiana. I'm going to read the letter that I sent out today. Dear Board Members and Mr. Forte, I have been a substitute in the district for 10-plus years. I have substituted in all three schools, but I have requested to work exclusively at Valley View School for eight of those years, primarily because, believe it or not, middle school is the age group I prefer, and because of the wonderful staff. Ten years into a position, I know what to expect. I know what a substitute teacher's duties are. You get a call the night before, morning of, or if you're lucky enough, two days before these summer. Walk into a specified classroom, look on the desk, and follow the plans left by your teacher. You pray the kids will behave. Write a note to the teacher at the end of the day to let him or her know what happened, and then go home. Ninety-eight percent of the time, the plans are easy to follow. Typically, it's a mix of take attendance, read homework answers, put day assignment on the board, put homework on the board, or show movie, have the kids read Chapter 5 and answer questions 1 through 7. For $85 a day, 7:30 to 2:20, with a lunch period and two prep periods, it's absolutely doable. The six-week assignment I was given at Valley View this past school year was drastically different from any other assignment I've ever been given in the past 10-plus years. The substitute service did not give me assignment, rather, the principal, Mr. Ayantaska, asked me to fill the very big shoes of Ms. Habithar, who had to take an emergency medical leave. What I heard was, oh my gosh, Ms. Habithar is sick, Valley View needs help, the kids need someone. And of course, as is my nature to help Valley View in any and every way possible, I agree. The terms of which were not discussed at that moment since, I had to rush into the classroom, get ready for homework, and see what plans were left on the desk. To my surprise, there were no plans. In fact, no plans appeared on Ms. Habithar's desk for six weeks. The only plans that ever appeared on Ms. Habithar's desk were the ones I created every day out of necessity. To me, it's impossible to run a class without a plan. You have to have a plan. You have to know the flow and feel of the class. You have to know what topic to teach, how to present it, what other materials are needed to enforce the topic, which problems to do as a class, what problems to do individually, and then what to assign for homework. And then there's tracking, there's so much tracking. I was also expected to perform all the other duties of a regular teacher in addition to planning. For example, parent contact, create, parent contact, create tests and quizzes, provide extra help to students during lunch, find ways to give extra credit, administer standardized tests, grade, integrate into Genesis, reply to parent emails, submit report card grades, et cetera. In order to take on these responsibilities, I had to learn how to execute these vital and integral portions of a teacher's duties, because these are not the duties of a substitute. I had to work at least three hours every day outside of the school day, just to get everything expected of me done, and make the transition seamless, as per the letter Mr. Ayantaska sent home to the parents, naming me specifically as taking over the class. What would be the benefit of working at least three hours outside of school hours every day for 28 days? I had to do it to get the job done. Mr. Ayantaska will tell you that the benefit was that I was guaranteed a position for 28 days. It is not that I am ungrateful, but, but as arguably the most requested substitute at Valley View School, there was a very high probability that I would have worked every day anyway those last six weeks, and I would have worked 7:30 to 2:30, and not have all the additional responsibilities and hours that came with this leave replacement position. Okay, why am I here? I was promised additional pay twice during the six weeks I worked as Ms. Habithar. Mr. Ayantaska told me twice during the six weeks that I would be receiving additional pay, and then reneged on that promise the last day of school. Although he now says he forgot to put me in the agenda for additional pay, you can clearly see in the packet I handed out last time that he said he could only pay the certificated staff member for help to me. And as you know, I received no additional help. Although the superintendent has agreed to pay me the difference between substitute rate and the certified teacher pay for nine days of 28, it does beg to question, why not the other 19 days? What did I do the first 19 days that was intrinsically different from the last nine days? Did the job description change in any minute detail the last nine days or the first 19 days? If the job was a substitute position, and according to a rule I read somewhere, you cannot use a substitute for more than 20 days in the same position. Was there any plan to replace me during the 28 days? The letter that Mr. Ayantaska wrote to the parents contradicts that, since it stated that I would be taking over for the remainder of the school year. In fact, while we're on the topic, what exactly was the position? It certainly wasn't a substitute position, because I've been studying for over 10 years, and this position did not in any way, shape, or form resemble anything I've done in the past for the district. If the district has the ability to pay me for nine days as a certified teacher, why can't I, or anyone else in the same position, be paid for the other 19? Why is it that it's possible to pay an uncertified teacher for certified rate for nine days but not for the other 19 days? It's illogical, it doesn't make sense. Certified and uncertified states are mutually exclusive, one cannot be both. Please note that every topic, every note-taking session, the entire 28 days, happened because I made it happen. Customary and metric conversions, plotting of all four quadrants, finding and defining slope, determining the equation of a line using x and y intercepts, solving a system of equations, finding the area of simple complex in 3D figures, absolute value, finding the constant of variation, these are examples of topics that I taught using my own uncertified teacher notes and creativity. I submit to you that I performed the exact same job the entire 28 days, and therefore should be compensated the same for the entire time. Just because you can't get away with just paying substitute rate the first 20 days, doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do, especially when the expectation was to perform above and beyond regular substitute duties. Please also note that between the 19th and 20th day, I remain the same person, doing the same job. To merely pay me for nine days out of 28, less than a third of the time I filled the leave replacement position, does not acknowledge all that I did the first 19 days. In fact, what it means is that you're willing to pay for one-third of the time, but that you want free services for the other two-thirds of the time. That is not fair, and that is not right. Board Members and Mr. Forte, I respectfully request that you do the right thing. Please make a motion to compensate me fairly for all 28 days that I worked as a leave replacement teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
I read it off the paper.
Yeah.
Seth Johnson, 49 Lakewood Drive in Denville. I just listened to Mrs. Lump's statement, and I've talked to her over the, the past few days, it does seem like if, if the district promised to compensate her, and from what I heard retroactively, then the district should stand up to that. And I don't know what the contract says, I've been out of practice for six months, and you guys have just signed new contracts. So I, I, there are ways that you guys can, can treat Mrs. Lump, I think, fairly, and I think if she was promised by your principal, who seems to have now gone back on his word and changed what he said through evidence of letters that he sent out, that, that you all ought to do the right thing, and figure out a way to do it without breaking the law. So that's just that, and then I have a couple of questions from the agenda tonight. So in the finance, item 5, resolve the board approved parts 1 and 2 of the Ross Haber Associates LLC study proposal for a total of $5,000. What is the Ross Haber parts 1 and 2 study?
Let me answer that. It's Ross Haber Associates, he's a, he's a demographer and a room utilization specialist to come in and do a survey of the district and the, try to project the needs of the district going forward, so we can make some intelligent decisions on what we will do with our temporary classrooms, storage spaces, and offices, and all these different pieces that we have to make some decisions on.
So it's a demography study? That would be clearer if it said that instead of parts 2 or something.
Well, it's more than just a demography study, it's a community demography study, it's also a room utilization study.
Okay. Good. And then number 7, are you guys switching attorneys, or is this appointment of this council for, for something else?
This is, we're not, we're not, we're not switching attorneys, we're going to use the new attorney for special ed matters going forward.
And I was glad to see that you guys are going to be voting on the oil remediation with the company that caused the problem back before I was on the board. There's a lot of legal reason here, is this saying that basically they're going to pay to remediate?
The, the settlement is not finalized, so that's why it says the board will approve pending attorney review, but the, the settlement that we're negotiating right now has, it's not finalized again, but it has to do with them, with them actually doing the work, contracting the work, not us. So there's...
So they'll take responsibility for...
They take responsibility, and then the final, the final sign-off would be when the DEP finally signs off on it.
So if the DEP signs off on it, they've done the right thing, and if not, then they're, they're still on the hook.
Exactly.
Okay. And any timeframe?
We're hoping, we're hoping to have it done by 9:1, if we, if we feel like the, that, that the... If we feel like the ground, that we won't break ground until later in August, then we'll probably put it off till next summer, just so we're not doing that kind of work in the middle of the school year.
It's a fairly significant project that requires some pretty good engineering and we want to try to mitigate as much...
Close proximity to the school.
Right.
All right, and congratulations on meeting your third goal and welcome to the district.
Thank you.
Just name and address for the record. And there's a form behind you too when you're done. No, you don't have to right now. When you're done, it's fine. Okay.
Christine Whitmore, 11 Overlook Drive. I didn't plan on getting up to talk, but after listening to Debbie, I was just jotting down some notes to support what she has been saying. I've known her for 12 years. I first met her, she tells me at the library. I don't remember that, but not because we were neighbors and not because we were friends, although we are now, not because our kids know each other because her kids are all older than mine, but because she's an outstanding member of the Denville community. My first memory of Debbie is when she worked, she created the Summer Plus program. I don't know if anyone knows that, but it's our summer program in Denville. And my son went there. And I brought him there because I wanted him to meet friends before school started. But he has a rare disease and it's hard for him to do, or at the time, it was hard for him to do any kind of summer programs. And she just, above and beyond, made it so comfortable and just really made it easy. So I want to thank her for that. I know her through the library. She was also my son's first boss. She ran the statistician program here in Denville for Denville Basketball. As a substitute teacher, if you ask my second son Noah, who, if you ever mention Mrs. Lumm's name, his exact answer every single time is, "Mrs. Lumm, she's the best," every single time. So she also works with my first son Zach in the mathnasium. So just like constant interactions within the community. She's strong. I've never known her to do anything less than 120%. And I know if Mr. I asked her to teach math to support Ms. Haber, who is an awesome math teacher, it's because he was confident that she could do that. And to come in at the end of the year and to be able to teach those kids, I would have no qualms at all if I was a parent in that class that my kids would know and learn math for the rest of the year seamlessly. So I would ask to please, as a board, do the right thing and consider paying Debbie fairly.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Only because I like you, Seth.
Seth Johnson, 49 Lakewood Drive. Just on that note, the board and the district have always worked for continuity in the classroom. And I think that if you're going to keep with that, which is, we know is all best for the kids, then even if the contract reads differently, then maybe the contract should be looked at to allow you to properly compensate folks so that you can attract someone to take on a long-term leave and not be paid $85 a day for a full-time position regardless of whether you're certified or not. And secondly, my kids also had, Mrs. Lumm is a sub, and she was fantastic every time.
Thank you.
For point of clarity, I don't believe this is a top...
No, I didn't want to get into it, but it's not a... You're right. Thank you. Any other comments from the public before we close that section? There we go. Since we have some new faces, if you haven't been to a meeting lately, you'll notice that we have a video camera in the back. All of our meetings get posted onto YouTube, usually within a certain amount of time.
Usually within 48, definitely within 48 hours.
So that is something that you have to look forward to. Yeah, nothing better than that.
Hi, I'm Robin Gershaw, Sixty Sky Tough Drive in Denville, and I'm here to support Debbie. I don't even know how long I've known Debbie. It seems like as long as I've been in Denville for 37 years, I've known Debbie. But if someone ever says to her, "The kids of Denville need you," this is the first woman that's going to step up to the plate. From even if, and I know some of you remember me from when you guys had to take away the drama program and all the extracurriculars. I'm the one that raised the money so that some of your kids could still be in the play. Some of your kids are still singing in the chorus. But to be able to form that group with Sue and myself, we also had to have a treasurer because we were raising money. And the first person I called was Debbie. "The kids need you." And that is the person she is. And if she stepped up, and I have my granddaughter here too because she was in that class, she did learn for six weeks. She didn't just sit on her butt and watch movies. This woman taught her every day for those 28 days. And I think it's time that you step up and you pay her for what she did. If it was one of your wives, one of your husbands, I think you would want them to be paid appropriately for the services they've provided and not, you know, make her have to sit at these silly meetings and waste your time, my time, their time, and do the right thing. This is Denville. We do the right thing here. We always have and I hope you will this time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Last call? All right, it is now 8:12. I'm going to close the public portion that's related to the agenda so we'll have the other comments available later. We do have one piece of, I guess, old business, some action to be taken. Don, do you want to take us through this one portion here?
No, the whole thing.
Oh, the whole thing, I'm sorry. You're right. Do you want to take us through that part, Don?
Okay. Under old business action to be taken, I'm going to move items A, B, and C.
Do you have a second for that?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah. It's more of a comment and maybe it's something to get into. I spent some time looking at the medical report. I brought that up once before. It just seems that there's a lot of activity of kids going to the nurse's office. Now, some of it's very understandable, very important. You know, kids there for epipen injections and insulin shots, that type of thing, medication. That's very important. But I looked at all three schools for the month of June. It was 1,552 items there for the nurses without getting into the telephone calls. And understanding that it's not the same count every day, but it averages out to 78 per day. Then you get into the telephone calls. Lakeview was 54 per day on average. Riverview 30 per day, Valleyview 31 per day. So, you know, a lot of calls for a lot of different reasons. Also noticed that on the screenings, Riverview, some of them were not completed. Might be a good reason for that. And Valleyview, vision and scoliosis were not complete. So I just think it's something to look at. If these numbers are correct, it seems that there's a lot of volume of activity in the nurses.
Can we have the same conversation every year? There's always a lot. I think you hit the nail on the head all the time, Don.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. You know, when I subbed up here, some kids frequently want to leave class, go to the bathroom, go to the nurse's office. You know, it's probably not necessary some of the times. So I just, I think it's something we should just take a look at. But you look at those numbers, you know, they probably don't have time to eat lunch or go to the bathroom during the day. I mean, and these are big, big numbers if they're accurate, which is, there's a lot of activity. I really think it's something that could be looked into including some of the things that weren't completed if they're regulatory...
I don't know if that's just a difference in nurses who fill in the form. That one nurse calls it at the end of the day, complete, and others don't. I don't know. And you know, I've had many questions on the form and I know, I believe actually they changed part of it. I don't know if it was...
So it's visits now or something?
Yeah, I think it was on this June one. I didn't pull up an old one to check. They changed one of them but not the other thing I always questioned, instead of being... Because it used to say, it looked like it was individual pupils, but it's really visits instead of individual pupils.
Right, some students have to go to the nurse three times a day.
I don't know what, you know, if you want to have a discussion about it.
Well, I mean, if you look at these numbers and what's the hours for the nurse?
Regular seven hours, 15 minutes.
Yeah, take a look at these numbers there. It's like they're...
They have two nurses in a few big schools.
They're on a treadmill all day long. I mean, based on these numbers, to me, they're really...
If you'll recall, I mean, all of our time on the board, the yearly nurses report, which this year when I looked at it, I had questions and didn't understand it because it seemed a different format than it had been in previous years. It used to always say, I mean, I think everybody other than, you know, the two new board nurses will remember, it used to always say that they needed more clerical help or they needed more this help. And I think finally the district figured out that they could have clerical help and not a nurse help for some of that stuff because that's...
HIPAA and whatnot?
Well, easier on the salary bill, you know, to have clerical help and not another nurse. But, I mean, it's been constant in all the years I've been here that it's a lot of people.
Yeah, I mean, obviously...
That the nurses are very busy and that they couldn't keep up and that's why we've added part-time people.
Yeah, and the state always adding, you know, a lot of extra work for people. But just take the 78 per day. Divide that by seven, it's like 10 kids an hour. And that's only means to the calls.
Don, I think, and I don't want to, I mean, I want to add a couple of words. I think some of it is the nature of elementary school with my stomach hurts and this hurts and that hurts and I want to go to the nurse and maybe, you know, some kids just want to get out of class. I don't know, I wouldn't be able to compare it to any other district or anything like that. I don't know if we have any idea if this is high or low or normal or not normal. I don't have a first sense. I mean, I know it's consistent, it feels like, but I don't know if it's abnormal to other districts.
And I don't know how you go about...
Well, are these not, you know, if these are the actual numbers, do we have enough nursing coverage for them to do the...
Well, that's what that nurse report used to always talk about.
78 kids per day, just on the med, forget all the paperwork, just on the medical. Are we adequately, you know, covered for all the work that they have to do? It's important. It just, it just seems like there's big numbers for the amount of hours in a day and the number of people we have doing the work.
I guess one thing that that doesn't give us is a narrative of exactly how they feel things are going on. Is it something where they're getting 10 students who are in for two minutes and out again? Or is it more evolved than that?
I don't have any idea, yeah?
Yeah, we just don't know.
I mean, you know, obviously the, I think if you ask anybody if they could use more help, the answer's always going to be yes, which is never the good answer. I mean, you want the most accurate answer. But to your point, I don't know. I mean, I guess we would hope that our administrators would let us know if they seem overburdened or not overburdened or something.
And our student population has gone down. So...
The medical problems have gone up. More and more kids have more and more medical issues. Allergies and diabetics, kids who need, you know, have seizures. There's so many different things that come up now that they're dealing with.
Okay, I just thought I'd bring you this. Those numbers really astounded me.
Would it make sense to maybe take an action to have her interpret the report since it's like a state format, like explaining the 1,000 number? Just like a little cheat sheet?
Do a narrative?
Yeah, because we do, this is not the first time we've talked about it.
It might be worthwhile. I know 10 years ago when I joined the board, the nurse actually used to come in when we did the yearly report that made the recommendations about whatever they felt there was a shortfall in their coverage and what they needed. And then at one point, it switched from being a public thing to being a committee thing that they came into and now we don't, there's nobody to answer questions. And I know even when I send the questions, then it's like a relay, you know, to get answers. So maybe it's time to have some kind of understanding of it.
I agree with that. I feel a little disconnected from it.
So you want to have the nurse come out one day?
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful just to, just get an understanding about these...
Want me to ask the head nurse to come to a board meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if people are comfortable with, like Barb suggested, a narrative to explain what it all is as a step, I don't know what's actually easier. Writing the whole narrative for what everything is or coming...
I don't want to make more, you know, I don't want to make more paperwork, but if we could, you know, if they could come and just, you know, just casual, just to get a feel for what's going on. Because I just, you know, divided the phone calls there. It's, you know, you got, I'm sure they must do them all in the morning or something. It's like, you know, 16 calls an hour. I mean, these numbers are, again, it's an average per day. I'm sure some days are worse than others, but it just seems like a lot of work for the nurses, a lot of things going on. And, you know, you have an understanding if we have enough nursing coverage? Do they have any spare time at all during the day?
I'll ask the head nurse to come to a board meeting in September or October and that way you can ask her questions. I think if she puts together a narrative, there'll probably be a question that's not answered and then you're going to want her to do another narrative. So why don't we do, why don't we just have her come out and maybe I'll have her present to you the actual report in a PowerPoint format and explain exactly what it means. Then it gives you an opportunity to ask her some questions. I think that sounds like something. I'll answer your questions, yes?
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions about this portion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, and I guess it should have been in the comments section. I mentioned to you right before the meeting started that the minutes for the June 22nd meeting should be amended to show that Mr. Napoloni wasn't present. And then I'll vote yes on it.
Don, you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
And Mike, you, Dino, I'm sorry, you were the second, right? Are you okay with that amendment?
Sure.
Good.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes on A and B and I'm going to stay on C. All right, Dino. Personnel, do you mind taking us through the committee report? Do you have a committee meeting yet? Do you have a committee meeting yet?
We have the committee report, yes, we did.
Please, first, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we had a committee meeting last week, really referred, really talked about two major items. The superintendent presented a breakage report, in and out. Basically, it was a synopsis of the changes over the budget and numbers for personnel, international reservations, retirements, new hires, so there were some positives and there were some negatives. I believe my takeaway from it was, he felt that, optimistic that overall, we should have a positive delta, we should have some savings through some of these changes.
Significant.
We also reviewed open positions, or positions that were open as of that time. River View night custodian and vice principal positions, the superintendent's administrative assistant, who's retiring, Valley View English and Social Studies teachers, Lakeview part-time special education teacher, and the River View school psychologist position. And that's my report.
Good, do you mind moving us through the motions for that one, for that section?
Sure, if there are no objections, I would move numbers one, two, three, four, five, and six under personnel.
One, two, and three.
Will we discuss?
You want to hold off on J?
On J?
I.
I and J or just J?
They're together.
I and J then.
Wait, what were you skipping, one, two?
No, I, one through six is a block.
Oh, one through six, excluding.
I just said it the wrong way.
Excluding I and J in the second portion.
Two I and J.
This is my first, this is my first one.
Including two I and two J, no, I'm sorry.
Wow, you guys are thinking hard on them. Goodness.
I'm not being hard, I should have just catched it at the beginning.
Special note of hiring is the, a new replacement for, yeah, we did, Don, I seconded it. A new replacement for Tina, right? Mike?
Mike Picatoli?
Can you pronounce your last name for me?
Picatoli.
Picatoli. I'm a Napoloni, so no one gets it right either. But she's replacing Tina at River View, and going to have some VP, some data, and some supervisor of student services functions. So welcome to the district. Other little note here is, and I've gotten to know Jennifer over the last eight months, nine months, probably more so than I had in my previous years on the board, and she's been great as far as I'm concerned, and I'm really sorry to see her go. If you could wish her at least mine, hopefully the board's well wishes in her retirement.
Sure.
I agree, I mean, our whole time on the board, we haven't known anything but her knowing what's going on.
Yeah.
It's a tough position to fill.
Yeah.
She's been, she's been fantastic.
It's hard to help somebody new coming in, we don't really know all the things she does. You know, it's amazing how many things she does that just are natural to her from being here for 25 years. It's that local knowledge.
I'll tell you the funny part, her southern hospitality, she refused to call me Dave until like the last month, or something like that. I said, "Under no circumstances, call me Mr. Anything." And so she finally did, so, thank you, Jennifer, if you're watching this. Obviously, we've got some other hires, notable hires in there as well, and some retirements, and then some payments there. Any other comments, questions about the portion?
Just that I'm happy to support number six from Mr. Forte's miracles. It's one that talks about, he mentioned it before, it's improving student outcomes, so very happy to support that.
I agree. I agree. Other questions, comments? I don't care what they said, Don, or Dino, you did great. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Mike, am I coming up? Say, shake your hand and say congratulations?
Mr. Napoloni, say yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Help us hide the camera, let's go, just shake your hand, come up here and we'll shake your hand. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Thank you, I'm good, beyond excited. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, thanks. Pleasure to meet you. It's great to meet you. Thank you.
I thought it was going to just come right back out.
No words of wisdom for your future students or your future parents that you'll be overseeing?
I'm just really excited, I come from Hellborough, I've been there as administrator for the past three years, and my family moved to the area, Toaco, last August, and I'm a family man, I'm very excited to be closer to my three children, six, three and a half, and one and a half, and my wife's more than excited. And then I built an excellent school district, I couldn't ask for anything better, and I look forward to working extremely hard to continue the excellence at Denville. Just, it's an amazing opportunity, so thank you again.
Mike said, Mike said that he's normally like the last guy to leave, I'm like, hmm, I only live a block away, so I'm always driving by at school, so I'll know.
So thank you for those kind words for the district, we obviously are paying him, but not paying him to say that. So that's just very appreciated, and good luck. It's never an easy job, you're never going to please everyone, but congratulations. All right, Mr. Anderson, your first time up.
All right, if there are no.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, committee report first, sorry.
Cut out of the gate.
It's not so easy.
We met on 7/9 via WebEx for a committee meeting, and for curriculum, we discussed a few different topics. The first was the new school time schedules, which will be publicly released, I think, at the Friday folders this week, is that correct, Mr. Forte?
It's posted on the school websites, and then Friday it'll go out in the Friday folder.
Can you talk real quick, just so we can get it out there, as far as, not the reasoning exactly, but how we were able to add a few extra minutes to the deck?
We, through contract negotiations, well, going back a little bit, we started this comp group, and we did, what we did was compared the districts that were like to us from everywhere, from central Jersey to north Jersey. You guys remember the group I came up with, it was 15 districts, I didn't pick and choose them, they all fit the same category, they're I-factor districts, they're K to eight, they have between 1,000 and 3,000 students, we fit into that, there's 15 like districts, from Somerset County to Bergen County, so there's 15. When I did a comparison of the instructional time from the middle school of the 15 districts, we were the last, we were lowest on instructional times, we had the least amount of instructional minutes in a day than all the other 15 districts. So we were able to, with some contract negotiations, pick up some additional instructional time, and the, obviously, to pick up instructional time and lengthen the school day for the teachers, the school day has to change slightly for the students as well. And we have been speaking about this for a while, we're not ready for two-tier busing, but we're working on the two-tier busing, so we hope, I mean, it would have been great to have the changes with the two-tier busing, but the two-tier busing wasn't ready, and I didn't want to start this two-tier busing thing and have it fail. So we're putting that off to the following year. And so for this year, there will be some slight changes in the amount of time due to the fact that the school day is lengthened. So to lengthen the school day, you can't just add time to all of it and then have the last school end at four something, so we had to add a few minutes to the school day. Again, the start times and the end times, and the lunch times, all that stuff is on the website, and will be published in the Friday folder this week.
Is there a reason why we decided to put it on the website and hold off explaining it? Because I know there's already confusion out in the community, because people saw it on the website and felt like we didn't explain it to them, so now they're explaining it to each other. So is there a reason we're holding, are we ready, could we release it sooner than Friday, since it's arbitrary in the summer when?
May Friday publish it.
Well, we didn't finalize, remember when we finalized the.
Well, I'm just saying, I saw it rampant on Facebook because it went on the website, and then whoever saw it first, then published it, now they're all having, and they're concerned about the fact that the end of the day changed, and they have things that their kids go to at a time that's now before the end of the day, and there's all sorts of confusion about what will happen to their, let's say, CCD after school, you know, did anybody talk to St. Mary's, are they going to change, you know, there's all sorts of ripple effects, and we didn't like tell them.
Remember when we found this out, right? We.
I know, we've been talking about it.
So we've only approved the contract on June 22nd. We have, you know, then we sat, we figured it out because everything was changing, and we were able to get the extra instructional time. I mean, you know, we have to put this, we have to put the schedule out to the parents, so we posted it online, and Friday, it's basically going to be a schedule. There's not a lot of, you know, explanation to it, other than the fact that these are the new start times and end times, and that there's additional instructional time in the school day, so.
Which should be celebrated.
I would hope that, I would hope that if people had concerns or anything, they would ask me and email me or contact me somehow, but I didn't get any of that. So I think, I think, you know, we, I agree that there's going to be difficulties, trust me. Every parent is going to have something that's going to conflict with them, but we didn't really do it for that reason, we did it to increase instructional time.
It's the right educational thing to do, I just, when you said, when, I just heard Mike say, since I'm not on curriculum and I wasn't there for the meeting, that, you know, we posted it online and then we're going to say something in the Friday folder, I wondered if we could push it up, since I know that there's confusion out there right now. But it's just the times, then.
I tried to get it in the Friday folder, it went out in July, but we just weren't ready to put it out yet, all the minutes didn't match up. So, so when it came up, we decided, I said, "Post it on your website, and then on the Friday folder on the 24th, I'll have, I'll have a document in there explaining, you know, what's going on with it." So.
I think the biggest confusion is that some people think it's tied to the two-tier busing, which we've been speaking about for a while, wondering if that's, I think that's the biggest part of the confusion.
Yeah.
Because I know that a lot of people have already been talking about, you know, what sort of was gained from the contract, and I'd already heard sort of outside of, you know, sort of outside of me, people talking about this idea that we gained time, and which was something that we should be applauding, of course. But I think the biggest thing, it's not even the communication part of it, but I think no matter, whatever gets said, it seems to be sort of snowballed into some sort of biggest thing, almost like a game of telephone.
Well, I thought that's, we're always about trying to be in front of the, and have the information come from us, not have them use each other as a resource.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's why we posted it on the website, but, but, I mean, this is not really the question, but the great part of it is, we picked up in the two elementary schools, 25 minutes a day of instructional time, which equates to 75 hours in a, in a school year. So we have 75 more hours of instructional time in the middle.